Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the city council meeting to order. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where its strength, one nation on the ground, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phil, can you please do roll call?
Craig Koshal.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fuloncamp.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
And Wiley Sturtevant.
Okay. Jamie, you want to come up? Oh, sorry. Was everyone given a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting on August 1st?
Make a motion to accept him as emailed.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same time. Okay. Then applications.
Yes. So we have two applications. The first one is for the antique car show from the Alaskan Historical Society, which will be at the museum. They're asking to close down Fifth Street at Monroe and West Jackson, and that is going to be on September 10th, which is the same day as the St. Mary's Fall Fest. So that part of Fifth Street will be closed, and then the Fall Fest also has Fifth Street from Madison and Monroe closed.
I think they did this previously, didn't they?
They tried to do it last year, and then with the weather, I think they had to cancel it, but yes. And all the signatures are on that.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same time. Okay.
Okay. And then the next one is the concert that was canceled on the 20th of July. Just to reschedule that, and that is for September 21st. So it's the Thursday night concert series. It's the Journey Band in Song Plaza.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same time.
Do you want me to give an update on the Kiki Yanga project?
Sure.
So we did reach the $50,000 fundraising goal for the Kiki Yanga project, and we are receiving the $50,000 matching grant from the IHCPA, and we actually are getting that this week. I got an email that that should come through. So that, in total, we raised $53,359. And so with that matching grant, we have $103,359. We have a year to spend those funds, but really, it looks like what, how we have everything set up, we should have everything ready by the end of this year. So the nets are part of that funding, trees for the dog park, and then the fish, we have that scheduled already for October. So everything's getting in place, and hopefully, while the weather's still fit this year, the dog park will open. I will be updating the Patronicity site as things get going and posting to our social media with everything for that. So that's that.
Okay. Great.
All right.
That's it. Thank you, Jamie. Flash your hand. Okay. Introduction of Sewer Ordinance, which amends Chapter 54, 177(c).
All right. Carrie had emailed me with a request to make a modification to this section of the code, and it really only addresses changing the heading on the table, the fee schedule table. It was unclear when it was describing a connection size in the current headings as to whether it was the water line or the sewer line. So even though this is related to the sewer line connection fees or the sewer lines, it's based on the water line diameter for the development fee that's attached to it. So the only change to this entire section is inclusion of a parentheses line that is based on water line diameter. So it just clarifies that. So there's no change to fees. There's no need for any kind of public hearing. It's just clarifying that heading.
Can we just make a matter of record?
No.
It's an ordinance, so it will be codified, so it does need to go through the formality of an ordinance.
What's the number?
Number... I think it's 12. Yeah.
Well, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 2023-12 on its first reading, short title only.
I'll second. Go ahead. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All the same time.
All right. Ordinance 2023-12, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, which amends Chapter 54 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015, is supplemented to amend the table headings in Section 54.177(c).
I'd like to make a motion to pass Ordinance 2023-12.
Second.
Short title only.
Motion second. Roll call vote.
Craig Koshal.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fuloncamp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes. Okay.
Second reading. Make a motion to introduce Ordinance 2023-12 on its second reading, short title only.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same time.
Ordinance 2023-12, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, which amends Chapter 54 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015, is supplemented to amend the table headings in Section 54.177(c).
I'd like to make a motion to pass Ordinance 2023-12 on its second reading.
Second. Motion second. Roll call vote?
Craig Koshal.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fuloncamp.
Scott Murray.
Yes. I think since this is just a title, it hasn't changed, go ahead.
We'll make a motion to suspend the rules and introduce Ordinance 2023-12 on its third reading.
By short title.
By short title only.
Second. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All the same time.
Ordinance 2023-12, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, which amends Chapter 54 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015, is supplemented to amend the table headings in Section 54.177(c).
I'd like to make a motion to pass Ordinance 2023-12 on its third and final reading.
Second. Motion second. Roll call vote?
Craig Koshal.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fuloncamp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Is there just one copy?
No. I have three.
Okay. We have a request for a handicap space. Do you have our information, or do you need Jeremy?
Jeremy had received a request from Tim and Jana Walkley to have a handicapped parking spot placed at, in front of their home, which is located at 350 South Third Street in Decatur. So I've prepared an ordinance that would amend Chapter 78, Schedule 3, which includes the table describing all of the handicap parking spots within the city to include a spot. And that would be located on the west side of the street, directly in front of their home. They sit, the house is situated at the very south end of Third Street, near Patterson Street, not far from the Boys and Girls Club.
All the neighbors are good with it then?
Entertain a motion to...
It's not south of your street? Is it right across the road?
It's an amendment to a codified section of our Code of Ordinances. So there is a table within Chapter 78 labeled Schedule 3 that identifies all of the locations for handicap parking within the city. So this would be an amendment to add an additional parking spot.
Okay. So I make a motion.
To introduce Ordinance 2023-13 on its first reading by short title only.
Okay.
Entertain a motion for that.
So moved in short title only.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same time.
Ordinance 2023-13, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, which amends Chapter 78, Schedule 3 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015, is supplemented regarding handicap parking spaces.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2023, the amendment -13, on short title only.
Second. Motion second, roll call vote?
Craig Koshal.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fuloncamp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to introduce Ordinance 2023-13 on its second reading by short title only.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All the same time.
Ordinance 2023-13, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, which amends Chapter 78, Schedule 3 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015, is supplemented regarding handicap parking spaces.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2023-13 on its second reading, short title only.
Second. Motion second, roll call vote?
Craig Koshal.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fuloncamp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Can I suspend the rules and go ahead and do it? Do we have to have a public hearing or anything, or what?
We don't have to have a public hearing oftentimes when it is a matter related to the streets or...
I would wait.
Yeah.
Can someone complain?
If somebody wants to come in and voice a concern.
Okay. So I don't need to do any more.
Yeah. It would be tabled for the...
Make a motion to table Ordinance 2023-13 until our next city council meeting.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same time. Okay, let's go ahead and do the request to repair the fiscal plan for annexation of new Cross Creek section.
Thank you. I was contacted by Steve Crey with a request to initiate the process for annexing approximately, it's just shy of 25 acres on the west side of town that abuts the existing Meadows of Cross Creek area. A formal petition is not being filed yet because it needs to be introduced with a fiscal plan. He's requested that I move forward with preparing that fiscal plan for introduction to the city council along with their petition for annexation. As the developer, he understands that that is a cost that's incurred as part of the annexation. In the past, that cost, and most recently, it's been shared by the city. He asked if I would do the fiscal plan. I'm asking city council for permission to move forward with preparation of the fiscal plan that goes along with that annexation petition at a cost of 50% to the city and 50% to the developer.
Please motion.
Curiosity, is it towards Barrington Woods?
Yes.
Yeah. Going straight north. Great.
It'll close a loop on our water, and it'll be a big help for us. Do you need a motion, man?
Yeah, I would entertain a motion to move forward with preparing a fiscal plan.
So moved.
I'll second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same time. Okay. Do you have any other budgets?
The haunted trail.
Oh, yeah.
We're starting to get expenses for that, and I just want to, last year, council approved to pay out of their promotional account. You got any funding to continue to do that this year?
What did we do last year?
I think I asked her up to $3,000, but we did, we bought a couple of generators last year, and right now, he's out purchasing the wood for the structures inside. I think last year, it put about $10,000 or $11,000 in the perks funds, I think.
Great.
So I don't know. Jamie, do you know where we're at on bills for what he's been buying for the haunted trail?
So he should have, wanted to point to Sherry last week, and that should be the final one.
Oh, that's it?
That should be the final one, that I'm aware of.
There might be some small things like lights and stuff like that, but... I mean, if we set aside $1,000, it'd be all right, you know?
Make a motion to put aside $1,000.
I'll second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same time.
Very well received.
It was. I can't believe we're already talking about the haunted trail. But, yeah, it was, I think we had a lot triple what we thought we were supposed to get, and so...
You'll grow again this year, don't you?
Yeah, probably. Okay. Last, I think we have to review budget Form 1s. Oh, I do have one, everything. Sorry. I forgot. The Kiki Yanga Festival Group had sent me a letter. Do we know what we did for them last year? They have...
A thousand dollars?
They have three levels.
I thought it was like $350 or something on it?
What's the level, Dan?
Uh, $250, $500, and $1,000. I don't remember. I don't know.
I can look it up, and if they want to approve what they gave last year, I can I'll make a motion to approve what we offered them last year.
Okay. Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same time. Okay.
I'm trying to review all the budget forms. I have any questions before we start, or just questions when we get there.
Let's think while we're there. We start with Mayor's?
Yeah.
So in the Mayor's budget, and all the budgets have a 3% increase, other than the police, but we'll get there when we get there. The Mayor just added a non-elected board member to add, to pay for $75 per meeting when attended. And then promotional activities, we increased $1,800 in additional hours for the Public Arts Director if needed.
For Kim down at the Hive.
To have additional hours.
So that's under the Public Art Director?
Yeah. Her budget comes out of my...
I'm thinking there are 30 hours, whether it's her or others.
Right. Right. We're just trying to figure out, you know, we could probably use some of the concession stand high schoolers or something, if they just need to fill the seat down there that can take money and stuff, so...
Meeting we had, she's currently 20 hours a week, and would really, value seen in being open 30 hours a week.
Right. You know, part of it down there is the rentals have really taken off. I mean, it's rented... Jamie, how much, do you know what we've rent, how much we've rented out this year?
I know that it's already more than, like, in July, it was more than all of 2022.
Yeah.
It's rented out every weekend at least one time. Most weekends are Saturday and Monday.
So a lot of her hours get taken up cleaning and getting ready for rentals and stuff like that, so that takes away from the hours that she can work to actually open the building.
I think it's important to give her the tools needed.
And, you know, we don't have to either, but it's, we just budget it so that it gets to that point.
I'm in favor of that.
Have we considered increasing the rent of that facility? I just rented it, and it was quite fantastic. You can't, you can't rent an art gallery for that cost.
No, and that's, you know, we, because it was...
I think Kim mentioned that too.
Yeah. What is it, $50 an hour right now?
Yeah. So we increased it last year for this year, and you, it's $50 an hour, but you get one hour before and one hour after, which is free for that right now.
So...
So you can...
She and Jamie reviewing that.
Yeah.
And, you know, I mean, most places, you can't rent for under $300 or $400 anyway, so...
There are a lot of, the hour before and after are really intended for setup and cleanup because Kim may be spending a lot of time cleaning, but that is, that is part of the rental agreement, is that the renters are to leave it in as good or better condition than what they found it in and clean up after themselves. So that's unfortunate if she's having to spend a decent amount of time dealing with that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think she has to spend too much time dealing with that. It's more checking it between rentals to make sure everybody's put back.
So if you have a Saturday and Sunday rental, then somebody has to come in, check the toilet paper and soap and all that stuff, and it has to be on a Saturday or Sunday to drive in here and check all that stuff, so... And we've been having multiple Saturday and Sunday rentals, so...
She's definitely taking some ownership of that space.
She has.
Shows. Yeah. I think we really should look into increasing the rent a little bit.
No, I agree. I'm not opposed to that. I mean, that's just a...
Sunday would be nice for that to...
Take care of it.
Yeah.
Agree.
Agree.
The goal, but, yeah.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that one. You know, maybe that's something we talk about by the end of the year, and starting with the first year, we change the rent.
Yeah, I think we could get something figured out like that. Clerk, we have clerk treasurer now? Do we have to pass each one, or is it lined by, you know, by each sheet?
Yeah.
Why?
That's how we've always done it, pass, but...
I'll make a motion that we pass the Mayor's budget.
I mean, oh, you don't have to make a motion.
No.
Sorry. You don't have to make a motion. Well, this is just for you to review, and if you want to change anything before we actually adopt the budget, which will be in October.
Okay. Is everybody good with this so far?
Yep. Me too.
And then for the clerk treasurer, just increase supply, software contracts, increase the bonds, and school and salary.
School and...
We reduce the salary by $20,000.
For those that don't understand the chuckling, our clerk treasurer is retiring at the end of the year, and we'll have a new clerk treasurer who's sitting next to you, and that's why they're taking him a little bit.
I think we do a three-year probationary period.
You guys all good with this?
I'm good with this.
Clerk treasurer's budget form. He's next.
And then on the attorney, also includes the raise and $75 per month for secretarial and $75 per month for the office chairman.
So the office expenditures have not been adjusted in approximately 16 years, and so I just ask for that to slowly maybe get in line with current costs of overhead and staffing.
I'm good with it.
Department heads. Your next is police department.
Want me to go through, or are you asking a question?
Um, I'd just look at it.
Have we got any questions to ask him? You got the same number of offices?
Any questions? I don't really have any questions.
Why did you change yourself from a department? I had to rank pay.
I was to put me in top pay in the department. Because he's younger than most of the chiefs we've had, so in order to do that, we had to change that definition. I think 10% more.
The last several years, they moved all the department heads, even the police chief and the fire chief as department heads, and in changing the wages, we had to move Kevin to a, back into the department and give him a rank pay. Same for the fire chief, so, so those are no longer considered department head.
I think it's important to note, it was just in the four-way news last night, the recruitment issues they're having. We've really tried as a city to get the police pay in line with neighboring police departments, but from small little burbs to the big cities and everywhere in between, recruitment has been a challenge. So getting the salaries up, I think, will help with that, I hope, because we have a great police force and want to continue to support them with what they need. Thank you.
The keep who we have.
It's, and with, it didn't help with state police giving such a huge raise all the way across the board. That's got a lot of your small-town police officers thinking about going.
Making a jump.
I just think that's budget. The raise has put us in line with everybody else, so we can not be a stepping ground, I guess.
Training force.
So I'm good with, with chief proposed.
You're good?
Hey, I got a question, and that's just strange, but you got miscellaneous motor supplies. Is that filters and stuff for the cars? Because you got also, you got gas, oil, and tires. You got miscellaneous motor supplies, and you got building and vehicle maintenance. I didn't know if they were all overlaps or what, that...
This is how it was broken down from the prior administration.
Yeah?
I just left those categories, the gas, oil, and then the household supplies, and the miscellaneous motor supplies are all the same account number, my correct, or creation number. They're just broken down into three categories.
Yeah. I think they broke them down just for their budgeting purposes, so they knew which account to take it out of. But it's really all...
Well, they got another one down here at the coast of the bottom, equipment, building, and vehicle maintenance, and that's another 19 grand.
Oh.
How many vehicles, what allowance do you have?
That, yeah. Well, this one... That, yeah. Well, this one is supplies. That's supplies, operating supplies, and the other one is, uh, building and vehicle maintenance, that's repairs and maintenance, that's hiring, repairs and maintenance, like getting things repaired. And this is only the supplies, that's the category.
Okay, supplies services, got it. Thank you. I'm good with it.
Jeff, you're next.
Far. What are hire-back days, Kev or Jeff?
That's where we can't get a relief driver working. We have to hire one.
Okay.
You, you have on here, you have three members currently eligible to retire. Do you anticipate any in this next year?
I'm not sure on one. The other two. But that can always change in part.
Sure, but they, they have to sign up for a drop, right?
No, they don't have to.
Oh, they don't have to?
They don't have to.
Okay.
You can just retire at whatever percentage you're at.
Okay.
The drop freezes, excuse me, freezes your percentage, and then you can go three years, and then that rate then goes into a fund that'll give you a, a long term retirement.
All right, any questions on it?
Good.
You're good, Jeff. Thank you.
Good night. Civil.
Okay, city hall, um, those just increases for the janitor and the window cleaning and repairs, the maintenance. I think that, I think that's probably increased.
The Drake's still the janitors?
Yeah.
You say a rate of seventy-five dollars for sixty-five?
Yeah.
Per hour or time?
I think it's per day.
Per day. They come in every day?
Mm-hmm. Not every Friday.
You good with it? Plan, building, zoning?
The only thing that changed on there is we added a vehicle for Brad for next year. So he says the Blazers have had it.
Yeah.
He's at the point where it's nickel and dime us. Um, the sad part is we can't get a price from anybody.
What?
Next year. Even where Kerry bought hers down at Bloomington, they won't give us a price on anything.
Did you try Columbia City?
We tried everywhere.
Okay.
And they won't give us a price for a vehicle for next year.
Huh.
On anything, because they don't know what the prices are going to be, the toy vehicles and that, going up and down.
So this is an asset.
So basically, I.
You got some.
For fifty thousand dollars and that's our budget, and I don't have to spend it on that guy.
Okay.
We just, he doesn't want a truck. He wants a little small sweet in the middle of the. So we're probably going to be looking something about the same size as what the Trailblazer is.
What is that? What year is the Trailblazer?
An oh-eight, oh-eight.
Uh, any more questions? Sanitation.
Thank you, Kurt. Yes.
Huh? Would it be crazy to ask, go look for new vehicles that's a year old? That's what I've always thought, but I guess there's a warranty. But it still have a, still should apply, dude. I, I find something a lot for thirty-eight thousand.
Oh, that Rubicon tracks are out, okay. Good.
What's that?
What's that? Okay, you got anything else here?
Street parks.
What's that? What's this, civil? Is that what you're talking about?
That counts.
The MVH over Red Street.
Oh, right. Well, yeah, he's got several, but they're not in that order.
Okay, going to go council on, climate council?
Jeremy, you can stay there. It's not, it's not going to take too long. We'll just pull out, tell them council. So in council, I just put the employees' benefits for the raises, um, and then increase the supplies. I, I budget Madison Street Plaza supplies, Hive and Merritt Center supplies in there. Um, so we had to bump that up.
Are you talking about cleaning supplies too? What kind of supplies?
No, it's just supplies like.
Toilet paper, soap.
Yeah.
Toilet paper towels.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question on the animal control portion. We paid thirty-four percent, which I get is our, is that working out?
I don't know. I don't know what the update is, but I just know that we agreed to it this year, but I don't know if there's no contract for next year. I would put it in, if, 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 if you guys want to continue it, I don't know, so I.
It's county, it's what the county came up with. I mean, I was on committee when they were trying to figure out who they were going to have to do, trying to hire somebody. I've heard various complaints about it. I mean, I've heard they only take certain animals and they they don't, people don't like how many, I don't know, whether there's just, there's some place, so.
Maybe we could have them back in for a update.
It would be nice to have the county, somebody from the county come give us enough.
Yeah, I think, I think we can budget that amount, but before we pay our portion of it, I think it's prudent to make sure Decatur and Burn and Monroe and county are all on the same page on this.
Right.
I agree.
You want me to keep it in?
I'd keep it in the budget, but I just think it's worth having more discussion.
We can reach out to you and make.
Because I've seen several social media posts as well, but concerned.
And like, yeah, and like, a couple of people have even approached me about concerns with the condition the animals they cut.
And I know they also had a, a time finding somebody that actually would take.
Right, right. It wasn't easy for them to find someone.
Right.
So there's a two-way street there.
Mm-hmm.
I think they need to report.
And then council on aging requested an increase of twenty-five hundred dollars for financial support. And then repairs and maintenance for, uh, streetlights and poles and the building at Merritt Center. I increased that. And if we add new streetlights, there's a little increase in there. And then I've also included the five thousand that the Arts Commission asked for support for the Public Arts Commission. The five thousand. And then I removed the.
Is that for the Hive? Okay.
Correct. And then I removed the thirty thousand from the budget that was for the election for, for this year.
Good. You good?
Okay, now Jeremy, you can do your sanitation, MVH, local road and street. Those are all in row now. I'm parking wreck.
Local road and street, there's no change. Parking wreck, a lot of that is the, uh, impact inflation, uh, four thousand pool, three thousand three, seven thousand repair supplies. Eighteen hundred utilities, fifteen hundred.
How'd you guys end up on?
I know it's got to be hard to know what to budget for food, especially. Like, how'd you guys end up with pool and in the park?
We did well. I don't solve the, the numbers yet, but I would have, but it did well.
Yeah. Jeremy, is your park board budget, you're addressing the bathrooms at Riverside upgrades? Is that something in this budget?
That is not. Uh, we have some proposals out for local contractors, so we'll deal with it and then we'll report back to you guys.
Okay.
I adopted two separate plumbers and then local contractor to, to give us some budget numbers. I want that, I would talk about it, probably, I would open it next.
Yeah, because I think we need to get those.
That's something to be done.
I looked into it a little bit deeper and it would have to be a total.
Oh, I believe it.
Silver line and everything, and then we're going to have to remove some things and kind of move some things around and maybe they need to comply because it's not compliant.
There's just increased activity there and it's, it's needed. Okay.
So that, that could, need to come out with some other fund or could be added into this.
Money from the confession team out there, the parks, does that pay in the parks? Are there?
Seventy-five percent of the states in the parks, states that are now working. Twenty-five percent of the goods back to park operators.
Is the full-time employee out there paid through the parks or paid through us?
They're still spread, they still spread out everywhere.
Seems like four or five different funds. I can look it up for sure.
I think that, that wouldn't be real. Actually, it'd be in the parks at some point.
I think utilities pays three quarters of that.
Yeah, he does. Seventy-five percent utilities and. Parks, other parks. Yeah, and twenty-five percent actually on the street, doesn't even come out of the park.
And then on top of that, um, I know it's out of the separate fund, but I think it's a hundred thousand capital play money that we've had the last couple of years, but that's how we see it. That helps our cash balance to eventually possibly get right back in here and. Uh, moving on, MVH, uh, other highway. Pretty much about the same, um, budget increase in the dump truck chassis, which you approved on seventy-five point three. Twenty thousand five hundred community crossings. Then, uh, thirty-eight eighty-five on sequet six. Five thousand on Merritt Services for the Five Points project. Five thousand repair supplies, five thousand.
I worked the budget through all the way to Form 4B and there's a lot in that MVH street budget, so, and I had to put in the tax account. So it shows for shorten that budget. So I'm not sure how you want me to go about doing that budget, if you have any suggestions.
Do we have to pave all these blocks along?
Well, that's, no, we don't have to do all that. I mean, that was just.
That's a lot of paving.
Yeah, that was just brought up, so that does not, you know.
What are what alls on there? First Street, Chamber, and Riverside?
And Merritt.
Yeah, I took the back there.
And Merritt Center.
Yeah, those are just the quotes that I know gave me ask for song, but I look at two brothers, which we need to really use.
Oh, and two brothers? Oh, yeah.
Probably as a priority, we could wait on First Street and the Chamber lot to figure out what's going to go there or not go there.
Mm-hmm.
In time, they said, I'd look at all of them so we, so we had an idea.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Um, I think definitely Merritt Center and two rivers lots.
Right, so we could hold off on First Street and the Chamber just in case stuff happens along there anyway?
I think that's two fifty.
Yeah.
A total of two fifty. That's not bad.
Not to do them all, no, but, you know, there, there will definitely be some savings there. One of the, all of it's dump truck chassis and eight thousand dollars. That, that would be a four hundred thousand.
Yeah.
You know, this. Because that's already ordered or, or on the.
Right. What, so what's going on? This is a regular dump truck? I mean.
Dump truck, another body, they split, but it's still a dump truck.
We talked about it, because the last one was over twenty years old.
Right, right, right. It was time. I didn't know, Kevin, I know wastewater is not sitting that grade as anything else, being it's a dump truck. Would like water or storm be able to help with it?
Oh, for a gallon, should that?
Yeah. She just got, that, that, when she ran them all the way through to Form Four, that one came up short on that budget.
About two hundred.
The chassis one fifty.
The chassis is a hundred and fifty thousand.
No, no, that's.
About, we're short two hundred ninety-three thousand.
The chassis on like one oh-five, that, that fine item that's all process smudges.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay.
So you're short how much?
Do you think it'll be doing two hundred ninety-three thousand? You can see that deficit. So MVH and Street Fund, is this, is that what I'm looking at?
No.
No, I, this is, that's a different, that's just comparing what they've budgeted.
So that paving, including in that number?
Or like the whole thing? There's a lot in, yeah, because it's got the bike points in there, it's got the community crossing.
July or August or whenever we call on our, um, letting, we'll have to pay that twenty percent.
Mm-hmm.
The matter, and it could be constructed next year, it could be constructed policy year, so regardless, I see us next year need out of the financial end and away from around.
Right, we've got to be prepared for it, whatever they say.
Just kind of, it looks like a hot mess right now, but it's just in preparation for.
Right, right.
Jeremy, do you plan on doing the three hundred thousand in paving still?
We could back that off, um, it all, it all.
That was the only other place I thought we could cut, okay?
It all depends on this next round, if we get the next round or not.
Well, I have a separate line item, two seventy, two hundred and seventy-five hundred for the community crossings, and then I have the additional paving.
Could we, could we hold just a few weeks and on the, on the announcement, see where we're at? If we don't get the community crossings, we can take that money out.
For a figure?
Match.
Yeah.
Leave the three hundred or the two seventy or whatever, that would take care of our, our problems. Or if we do get it, you know, that two seventy's in a restricted, so I don't think you can ruin us with that.
Okay.
Oh.
Because that restricts, got to stay in restrict.
Yeah, it has to stay in there, but I didn't know if you needed that much.
Certainly, they could still fit in there.
We could go, yeah, we could either leave it in restricted or do that two seventy over to the match.
Right.
Would, would be an option.
Okay.
But should we remove First B and the Chamber Park, that's a hundred and thirty thousand.
But that's not in MVH?
Yeah, but can't you use their any-day fund to pay for something in MVH?
Oh, you, you mean move, move out of.
I, I would say if we take.
Would be the chat.
See, when the announcement comes out, we don't have to actually make a decision.
I don't know, I just, my opinion, that's a lot of parking lots we're paving only one year, I mean, spread them out across a couple of years.
Which ones are you wanting?
We need to do Merritt Center, we have two brothers.
I guess I don't know what the Chamber lot looks like and then that's bad.
Any prioritize?
But I, you know, on the, where we talked about for Mark's building, if we're gonna tear that building down, let's pay the whole thing. Or, you know, if we have a plan for anything, but you got sewer going right through the backyard, I think, so. You know what I mean? I just, like you said, we can move it around before, when we find out if we get that.
I don't know how big you're gonna wanna pave the Merritt Center too, I mean, when they get that building up.
Yeah, well, we, it's kind of a part of the deal is to repave that parking lot.
And everything, pave and strike it.
Community, way down the line here. Where are you guys at?
We were still on M V H, but I think we're good with it, we're gonna keep it that way until I hear from Jeremy, I might need to adjust it for you. But when I prepare the final budget for you guys and we have the public hearing, we can make changes. We can't increase it, but we can decrease it. Once I, um, advertise Form Three, I can't reduce the budget. I can't increase the budget, so.
I think we're CCI and CCD.
Did we go through sanitation or did you have any questions on sanitation? No?
Yeah.
Very, very quickly.
Okay, so the rainy day, we're just doing, we're taking the Merritt Center in there and the. Two thirty-nine West Minot Street, right?
What's two thirty-nine West Minot?
That's behind, that's our city lot, we own this lot way in behind.
Right.
There.
Okay.
Right, Jeremy?
What's that?
That, we own, behind two brothers, it's still a lot way behind, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, it's not the first one, it's the lot behind. We're the, we're the lawyers part.
We own, we own both of them.
Oh, do we?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
But that, this quotes for all of it.
Yeah, they don't, they really don't have any part. It's all city, yeah, just like many.
And on local law continuing to, um. Kevin never changed anything on that one. That's the same. Okay, now Riverboat. And that was the paved Riverside Center parking lot.
I'll find that, that.
Which one?
I mentioned it when everybody made a comment.
Sanitation, are you guys okay with that?
Go over it, very first part, cuz there's something in there.
What we're gonna do, is that, hey Jeremy, on that paved in the Riverside parking lot, is that, is it gonna take care of Behind the Water company too? You gonna pop those posts out or leaves there?
At the bottom.
No, that, uh, that was about included, that was talked about afterwards, uh, so that would be a bit additional.
Here. We did go through it.
You good with that one or do you wanna pull off on that? The parking lot.
Which one? Was that just to figure them out?
It could be a better question than that. I thought we could, I thought.
Jeremy, on that Rubicon on the sanitation, that's that computer that does the truck routes?
Yes.
Are we still using that all the time or? Okay.
Every day.
Okay.
When will the Riverside Center project be done, the heckle ball court over here?
Uh, it's all dependent on fencing now. Um, well, we're in the shuffle ward, we're getting plastic shuffle ward courts are coming. The fencing, I think, is another month out, is that, well, September? Early September, you said four weeks like last week, didn't you, or something?
Yeah, I'm gonna tell you middle of September, but I think it'll be done by the.
So basically, it's, we, there's.
This fall.
Yeah, they're, they're, they started painting, waiting all a bit more paint, they're getting, the fencing's coming and the shuffle ward courts are coming, so. I would say hopefully by October, have it all done.
They have, and there's actually the ticker tape stuff that is around it too.
Are you guys good with that?
Mm-hmm.
And then lit public safety, I have. A budget together with police and fire and then I have one separate, which is fire and one with police, so. Do you guys have any questions for them?
And we have the grand opening the day of the island news. Grand opening of the Riverside Center and the heckle ball and everything.
Same day?
It'll be close, just to be specific.
Okay, yeah.
I guess my question on the lower, or the lit public safety is, have we ever decided how we're dividing that out yet or anybody come to a meeting? Figure out what we're gonna do with this?
Nice Jeff.
I mean, we keep talking about it, but no one's done it, I've seen you have a list of projects that you want done in the future and they're gonna be expensive, so. Well, and we look today, the, the, the balance on that's going up and it's, it's been pretty decent, but it needs to be because. You know, obviously, when his bond goes off for the building, we'll, we'll be looking at trucks and building to the fire department probably, so. We're trying to let it build up.
Yeah, and it's got a healthy balance right now, so.
Yeah, I know, but is there like, I think there should still be some kind of. Some random understanding how that works between the two, if we're gonna split it down equally or we just say whoever wants to grab as much of it? Can grab as much of it? I know it can't be done in the count and we've already discussed that, but I really think we've changed chiefs twice now.
Can you interject? What, Les told me what, what the original agreement. That with that, any debt service comes off the top and then it was supposed to be split that he did. That's what Les told me and he was on the. Original handshake, I wanna say of that, but nothing is in writing like he's.
But I think what, I think maybe what he's getting at is, if we wanna build it up, we need to say, this is how much each one can use.
And maybe.
So that we can keep that fun building.
Right, or the chief can say, I'm saying, I'm putting fifty thousand or a hundred thousand away, cuz I'm gonna come ask you for a million dollar truck here. A while, because right now, he's gonna come ask for a million dollar truck and we're gonna say.
No.
No, or how are you gonna pay for it and?
Right, actually, actually, he's gonna ask for a three million dollar truck.
Oh, yeah.
Right now, with the purchase for a carry-on, it's up to a four-year loan. We've had a paper, so it's gonna take four years.
And what's the price on one now?
One of them is a million dollars.
Yeah.
Do you, do you charge other cities or county?
Uh, we have mutual rate agreements where. Basically, where we help them and if we need help, they come and help us.
I just wonder, what do they bring to the table with, besides the ladder, I mean, you got a ladder truck. Does anybody else have a ladder truck?
I just got a Texas, my third mile is back in service. They had a cat, another catastrophic failure.
So where they cover you is when yours is out of service, theirs has been out of service all summer.
Oh, I see.
It was out of service, they brought, right, it came back after the last bluffing fire, they were running through its paces and. They had oil everywhere and only had a quarter of its tank of hydraulic fluid, they don't know where the leak was.
I, I'm just trying to figure out if we needed it.
So basically, if ours goes down, we know they'll cover for us, that's, that's what the mutual aid is.
Yeah, it, it needs to, we need to keep that.
I agree, I just was wondering if there was a charge, say, burning. Ladder truck to get to the top.
Just if we need help, they come help us, if they need help, we help them. You never know when you're gonna need it.
So what's your thoughts on that? I mean, you asked about it, so I mean.
It needs to be a plan, a memorandum of understanding of how this works, if the debt service, if the debt service is gonna come off first and we build a new fire station, then. Fire station is gonna take all the debt service and then split it fifty-fifty, I mean, if that's the original agreement?
Well, that's what they did with the police debt service.
Right, I'm okay with that, but I really think it should be in. Writing to give both these guys some guidance on how to spend the money or what they're gonna save the money away for, because it can only be used by them.
Right.
Or, I mean. It's gonna go up and up and they just raised the percentage again. And I know. We don't wanna talk about it, using it for wages, but that's what the county did and that's how they bumped all their wages up at some point in time. There might be a time that we have to do that to compete if we don't have the funds to do otherwise. I'm not saying do it that way, but.
I want to man interject, we had a meeting with the Sheriff's Department, their. Lit fund is not keeping up with their wages, that's why they had to raise it.
Exactly, but that in turn is why we had to raise, raise our wages, because they wa, raised wages but no way to pay for it. So now we're stuck trying to keep up. I understand that it's not a feasible option, but. I think there's gotta be some kind of an agreement there than just a handshake from two chief, two chiefs ago. And I really think we should, I don't know, I've said this for the last year and a half, two years, we should probably put a deadline on it to have it here in a couple of months, some kind of an agreement that, that's how it. I really think it just needs to be clarified, cuz you might change over chiefs and then somebody, you know, just head it off now instead of later. I don't know if that's what the Anne types up.
Yeah, she would do that.
I mean, I would certainly be the one to, um, draft the memorandum of understanding, I would not recommend just telling me to go put one together. Maybe work with clerk treasurer and chiefs and.
And what we've spent in the past.
Right, and, and kinda do an in-depth look at how it's been allocated or used in the past and what that.
I mean, the biggest thing is, it's all income taxes, so. It can fluctuate, it's gonna, it's been going up for a long time, but if we have a downturn, it could be a couple of years of now drops off, so if you give a certain amount, that could hurt in a slow time, but. You give a percentage of what was taken in that year. Say, this percentage is yours, this percentage is yours, but you need to keep this much in every year to carry over for big, for big expenditures.
Or the, yeah, or they can say, I've kept this much back, I wanna go purchase this million dollar truck that I've been saving for for the last six or seven years.
Right.
I'm not saying dollars, percentages I'm fine with, yeah.
Cuz Jeff could be saving and saving and saving, then we get two chiefs and then, and then police chief comes in and spends all the money that Jeff saved for that truck.
Yeah.
It's not gonna happen.
I'm not saying it's gonna happen, but I really. Something in writing.
But it has to show in one account, right?
Yeah.
Yes, it has to be in one account, but it has helped, I was able to change the appropriation number, so within that budget, now I've got. Fire as two oh five and as two oh four.
The year what they've planned.
Yeah. But the cash balances grouped together.
Okay. I would be along with Dan's of a percentage rate and then maybe get with the captains and see, but. I'd really like to see that here sooner than later.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Nope, I agree. So we'll just run a form of whatever comes in, minus the debt service, split it up in percentages. And then each one has to save so much percent, let's see what that number comes out to compared to what they've been spending every other year.
And they could, I would assume either Phil or Kevin can keep a spreadsheet or the chiefs can keep a spreadsheet to say what went where.
And I can write a report off her, Kevin. Will there be a requirement to save a certain amount?
It might be something to think about cuz the.
Well, and when it originally started, it was always keep back a hundred thousand.
Of the, of what came in that year?
Right. And only spend it on large items.
Kind of like their very first agreement when they first came out. But now it's been increasing in value and it's probably, you like, it might go down, but.
Yeah, long-term, it's gonna keep going up.
Yeah.
Initially, it was. Intended for capital expenditure, capital. Okay, yeah. I do know when we talked about salaries, that it was not intended to be towards salaries. In large part because of the fluctuating nature of it and the likelihood that the salary increases would outpace the growth. And you're gonna end up draining that account over time versus.
We gotta raise the taxes on it.
Now, we don't get to raise the rate, that's all county has to do that.
Yeah, that's kind of my fault.
And then CDA is, um, this is just for this year, but we'll need to make a ordinance for a two-year plan. But I kinda just put in things that you guys have mentioned, I know you wanted to keep in the sidewalk program. And Jeremy's asking for a hundred thousand again for the park improvements. And, um, I included the, um, five points project in there. And then as kind of economic development gets them up, they can request up to some two percent for planning and economic development projects. But we will need to buy, adopt an ordinance for a two-year plan before the end of the year. Any questions?
Nope. This one on, um, what's this one here? Cater City, Civil City, and it says, uh, arts, artist commissions.
That's public art, that's the art, art commission for the hive.
Okay, then you get, uh, repair and maintenance city on sculptures, I get that, public art programs, hive. That's another eight, so that was an increase then? Personal services, service and charity, okay? And then public art projects, events, is that tied with the hive also?
Yeah, well, that's any project or events they have, like the, um, fly the fairy and the cater sculpture tour is in that dollar amount. And then the redevelopment commission is, um, pretty much, they kept their budget pretty much the same, other than they added Second Street, um, improvement. I think they were thinking about the five points at, or helping with that last stretch of Second Street improvement. And, um, any other capital projects. That maybe the city may need help with.
You know what, the facade program?
Hmm?
We took that out, we'd never put the facade program back in, right?
We put it in CDA.
Oh, you did put it in?
I did, did I not mention it, I'm sorry, I did put that in there, yeah. Capital improvement projects, facade and capital improvement projects with five points, so yeah, I did. And I budgeted fifteen thousand, I think Wiley mentioned fifteen each year.
For which one?
For the stud.
It was fifty.
Fifty, I thought you said fifteen, did he say that?
Fifty was for the facade.
Yeah, we definitely oughta give, go fifty.
Yeah, but he corrected the minutes then.
Fifteen they were talking about doing, the homeowners thing we were talking about doing. We can manage if someone's doing their mulch and bushes or stuff like that.
I thought that's what he was talking about.
That was fifteen thousand.
Oh, so you want.
The facade program is fifty thousand.
Oh, yeah, that's not in there, do you want that to be in? So fifty each year or twenty-five each year?
It would be fifty.
Fifty a year, fifty.
And that's for downtown facade?
Uh, we don't have to declare that.
I think just.
Well, cuz the other fifteen is for the homeowners.
Right.
I mean, I could just.
Thirteen to each part, down two. Right, but thirteen each part town too.
A total of sixty-five then, really, right?
If you budget that way, then we decide how.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks for catching that, yeah.
We all done with that, Dan? Are we done with that now?
I don't, I'm not sure, she's still out here yet.
Uh, I just have, um, a police and fire pension left, I think.
These are just percentage increases.
Um, yeah, and when I work the budget all the way through, I don't have enough for the police pension fund, uh, because of the raises. We budget the officers, the current officers, um, perf benefit in there. And so it's short a little bit.
They raised it too, right?
Yeah, and the state increased it, instead of eighteen percent, it's nineteen point one percent this year. Um, I think I'm short like thirty, did I say thirty?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one thousand.
So you're just gonna put that back in?
So, I'm not sure.
Well, we talked about the, the death, the death benefit.
I did budget three death benefits. They pay out twelve thousand if one of the retirees pass. So I don't know if you want me to budget all three of them or just, I can reduce that. Knock on wood, we've, I'm fortunate on that. So, I'm not sure how to handle that.
Is that money that gets reimbursed after you pay?
Well, I've got that in the revenues as being reimbursement from the state, so I've already got that calculated in there. They don't reimburse the, the current officer's money.
Only the pre seventy-seven.
The actual, the old pensioners, the two, two hundred and twenty-five thousand will reimburse in a hundred and one five, they reimburse.
You're short thirty thousand on the two fifty-five?
Yeah.
Probably lower Kevin's salary.
Kevin G. is turning out.
That's not it. Thirty-one thousand.
Phyllis, what are the six dependents that are budgeted?
Those are the people, the pensioners that have passed and it goes to the dependent, their pension, a portion of it.
Okay.
That's a different calculation.
Is that something the police department needs to come up with, figuring out how to work that in their budget?
So if we would reduce one of those death benefits, it would be down to.
I would take it down to twenty-four?
Yeah, so you'd have, we'd have, actually take it down to about twenty, the deficit would be about twenty. And then we talked about could possibly pay down lower at twenty.
See what out of, like the budget deficit would come out of lit?
Yeah, yeah, so if you get one of the, one of the death benefits, it's about twelve thousand something, so that would drop that down.
Something they're gonna have an issue with every year after that from now on, or is it just, there's anyone?
Well, she won't, she's retired.
Well, do you know estimate those are, oh, that's fire, sorry, that's police.
Yeah.
So we got, she knows.
I mean, we can only change.
There's that many, she knows that's that many, four percent. She's estimating, estimating that there could be that, so that one's really the only number that she has to play with in that.
Dan has it. So that's how I arrived at that, what revenues are coming in. And that's what we're short, but yeah, it could be an issue each year, so.
But taking one of those out would be, would reduce that, if you divide that by three, right, isn't that?
Right, so take two off, that's nineteen thousand left.
Right, but that would need to come out of their operating budget somewhere, right?
With Lola.
Be different than how it's been used in the past?
The only other thing is if we allocate the maximum levy more towards the police pension this year and less to the general fund.
There has been a change in the law with redevelopment commission, that a portion of their budget can be used towards the police and fire operating costs.
Really?
That's ridiculous.
Not, not, you know, that would need to go back to redevelopment to see if that could be an adjustment for this year, but, you know. And I would caution council, making, you know, habit, that that would be.
The only issue with that though is all the changes you're gonna have to make in payroll, cause we're gonna have to change all the appropriation numbers and.
Yeah, I mean, that would.
And to keep track of, yeah, that's what we wanna.
Putting it out there is pension, and making it known, but not recommending it.
So it could go for anything, hopefully suffice.
It can go toward their operating budget, so it couldn't, it.
Can you go for wages and benefits, it could go for their operating, no? Okay, okay, so this is wouldn't be able to, but their operating.
But can you re, are there things that could be reworked within?
Can he reduce the operating budget to pay for that?
I could move the levy, but I don't know if you wanna change. I think it would be less, we could just change the levy or go towards.
Or if, uh, I'm just throwing this out there, it's not my position to say how it's used, but there was a generous gift given to the department. Could not be used to fund that, because maybe it's not going directly to the police at the time, but that number is in turn a effect of a raise that they're getting. I don't know who makes the call on that or how that works, but there is a sizable, there is a sizable amount of money to make the budget work if it's not going through redoing all the wages and everything else that.
The Betty Walters Fund?
I don't know whose decision that is.
The police chief, and that's subject to council approval?
I'm just throwing that out there.
What do you think, Kevin?
I'm, I'm agreed on, yes, this is a hungry, great thing.
Yeah, we probably should solve it.
Not a whole lot different than pulling it from lit.
I mean, the other option is cut the police budget down or the raise amount, so, I mean.
It doesn't change a whole lot though, cause I looked, that, that's what, I tried to wrap my head around it this morning and I tried to lower the amounts and it doesn't knock that down that much. We can run some numbers and talk about it and send them, she can send out some, some options. Uh, but you almost need to sit down and, and see the numbers in front of you to see what, how you can adjust. I mean, there's not, this isn't something where he could find something to operate from and, and like in the budget, just cut some stuff out to cover this?
I don't think that's gonna affect this, cause it has its own tax rate, the police pension fund.
So this is directly tied.
To the tax rate.
It's directly tied to the tax rate with the funds available.
But then she sets the percentage of that, she sets the percentage out of what, what that goes towards. So what Seth's saying is she could just change that percentage and it'll change it. Because that's what, I think she's saying that you can't take off operating from, because pensions have their own tax rate.
I understand that, but are some of those numbers associated with the salary? Do those numbers fluctuate that create?
You mean in the police pension? The, we have to pay, whatever we give current officers a raise, the old pensioners have to have that same raise.
That's my point, there's a direct, there's a cause and effect. So because the, the raises that are being budgeted in the police budget, that automatically changes cases that.
Correct.
And it's a, a direct, um, and proportional change, so I'm, I'm just trying to understand, please don't take this as a recommendation or, um, but if the, if their raises are reduced by a percentage, that number goes down.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I meant that number.
But it doesn't drop it significantly, okay. Okay, I mean, I thought that that was the way it functioned, but, okay.
So then you just change your percentage and more goes towards the general fund, is what you're saying?
If you want me just to change the maximum levy, I can try to adjust that and see how it works. If you wanna do that, if you don't wanna reduce the wages, then I can try that and see if we can get that out.
Yeah, so you can try that, find all of our scenarios.
I'd be looking at options, but.
When you change their tax rate and that you reduce the general fund, then everyone else's budgets that work don't?
I would have less in the cash reserves in the general fund.
Okay.
Right now we're at thirteen percent and they require, they recommend a minimum of fifteen percent of your.
Is it required, do we have three death benefits?
No, it isn't, that's what's there because, well, well, you have to budget for some, because if you knew the ages of these retirees, you wanna have twelve thousand available to pay them, cause you have to pay it out to them.
Go look at the increase in the budget we give, or in their pension, they're receiving that, right?
Yes, but it's required by state, pay them that increase that the current officers get, they also.
Yeah, it's a good world thing, but get rid of it, you can't.
It's required by state.
Well, then if someone's.
And she said no.
Well, not to have it, you don't necessarily have to have three, but you probably have to take into consideration.
We don't have to have three.
So that would reduce it to twenty-four.
One path, you have the money available to pay them, to pay that out.
Does it have to come from that specific line item then? You buy an insurance policy on them or is that just cash that we're hanging on to to hand them with the death?
Yes, the money we have on hand to pay them, yeah.
Okay.
But if, I mean, if you don't want it to pay out there, then we're gonna have to put it in budget, in another budget.
That's a.
Cause they'll need to be appropriated.
Okay.
So.
Every retirees do you have?
There's six.
Six?
Six and six dependents. But the, the death benefit only goes to the pensioner.
Do you have that, drawn to that paper you had earlier that you were showing me with this pension stuff? They showed me, she went eight one good.
I can pick it out here though too. Is our, okay, I look at this one here, it says, uh, forty, forty-four oh one, cumulative capital improvement cigarette tax, sixty grand. It's IT network email, I mean, is that what it costs us every year for, for the county to run our email or our internet?
It's CFS in the county and then we pay, um, centrally for the email, I think. But I don't know if we spent the total of sixty thousand, I'd have to look it up, but that's what the budget is.
Save your four hundred dollars on each person, save a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's worth the trying to get a raise.
Yeah, I get that.
I'm saying it doesn't cost that much. Nope, I already have the.
Oh, I didn't read the numbers.
So if you want, you know, just look at options and then I can bring it to the next meeting and you guys can decide or how do you want.